All right, thank you. We'll move to the new business. We have a resolution 2023-49 approving 2022-23 third quarter budget adjustments. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, we do have our controller here in case there are any questions. However, this is just normal business, quarterly adjustments to the budget as we go along, trying to bring everything in line with the actual spending.
All right. Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Compliment is here.
Yes.
CFO?
Yeah.
Question for him.
So how you feel it is, it is a, what is the real percentage of the real budget? As you maintain a lot of things modified, so you feel comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Okay, that's the question.
Yeah, I've gone through the budget in quite a bit of detail, and that's why you see so many different amendments, which just shows that, you know, I've gone into, and these are just some of the major ones. There will be some minor adjustments in the fourth quarter as well, you know, as we close out the year.
Yeah, after six months, I don't want to measure adjustment again, so you feel comfortable? We are okay?
Yeah.
What is the mayor and council sixty-two thousand, eight hundred and eight, what is it? Is it a divisionary expenditure or else it?
Where are you looking at?
One seventy-two, third one down from the top.
I know.
The city council expenditure?
Are you looking at the budget or are you looking at the amendment?
Amendment.
Budget amendment?
Yes.
Yeah, he's on the budget amendment. So what, your question is, it's different than last year? It's increased?
Well, last year was sixty-two thousand.
Yes.
And ninety-two was the amended budget for this year.
Eventually to leave it here, so.
So basically, there's no, there's no difference, there's no amendment in this particular item? So this is what was the budget originally?
The third line is the recommended change, the recommended third quarter amendment. It is zero on it one.
All right. So there is no change in that quarter?
For that one.
For that one, okay.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Chowdhury?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri?
Ah, yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution 2349 approved.
Thank you. Next one is resolution 2023-50, first reading of ordinance 2023-01, City of Hamtramck, 2023, 2024 general appropriation ordinance.
Offer.
Second. Mr. Mayor, as you know, it is the first reading. We will have the public hearing at the next council meeting. Our controller is here in case you have any questions, but usually with the first reading, we just zip through it and do that at the next moment.
Okay, any questions or discussion?
No. So the next public hearing on this would be April twenty eighth?
Twenty fifth.
Twenty fifth?
Twenty fifth.
Okay, vote?
Yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Chowdhury?
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri?
Ah, yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution 2350 approved.
Thank you. The next one is resolution 2023-51, approval of DDA Public Works and Economic Adjustment Assistance Program for Economic Recovery Plan and Coordinator.
Make an offer?
Second.
Mr. Mayor, this is simply just the approval of the grant that we won. We did speak about this prior. It is a three-year term for a full-time economic recovery coordinator who will work in line with our CED director. I'm very excited about this. As you know, we need as much help as we can get in community economic development, and this should put a good shot in the arm with that.
So are we looking for someone now?
We are.
Okay. Well, what are the requirements? Does he have?
I'll have to get you back to you on that one specifically because I don't believe the posting is done, but we do have a couple part-timers in-house right now that I'm sure we probably will look at first, but regardless, the posting will go up. I can share that with you once it is developed.
All right. I hope that we get someone who can write grants on that part.
We're all writing grants.
Get somebody buy a grant to get more grants.
All right, so do we have any more discussion on this?
Okay, Councilman El Samiri?
Ah, yes.
Councilman Chowdhury?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution 2351 approved.
Thank you. The next one is resolution 2023-52, approval of hazard mitigation assistance grants for 2021 building resilient infrastructure in communities.
Offer.
Second. Mr. Mayor, just another acceptance of many grants that come before you. This is the grant to pay for the designing and the research needed to develop the sewer system upgrades. It's essentially the first step in the major upgrades forthcoming.
Okay. Three twenty-five thousand? Okay. So. Just to clarity on this particular grant, it's a seventy-five, twenty-five split. So three twenty-five is the total grant amount for which seventy-five percent would be paid by the city, uh, twenty-five percent would be paid by the city and twenty-five, seventy-five by the grant. That's how the split is.
So we'll continue to do our best to bring grants for this project as much as possible to relieve as many costs as we possibly can to the city on this.
And other ways of relief.
Vote?
Vote.
Councilman El Samiri?
Ah, yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman Chowdhury?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution 2352 approved.
Thank you. Next one is resolution 2023-53, approving the purchase of one street sweeper truck for the Department of Public Services.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. Mr. Mayor, we do have John with us from DPS. I don't know that he needs to speak because it's pretty self-explanatory. I think we're all pretty excited about it. We hope to get it. John, how long before this one comes in if it's approved?
Sometime June, mid, late June.
Okay, so hopefully by June, we're out there sweeping our own streets.
So completely brand-new, right?
Brand-new.
Yes.
Right off the showroom.
It's not going to.
It's ours.
Can I say, I'd like to say something on it again. What's nice about this particular unit and why I'm really for it is it has the attachment to do catch basins, so we can start cleaning out our own catch basins because we're spending thousands and thousands of dollars cleaning out catch basins. So I can get a preventative maintenance program going, bring the truck out. It empties right into a roll-off dumpster, which is convenient. You fill it up, you ship it out, you're done. So you don't have to dump it on a street, use a backhoe to clean it up or a dozer or nothing. It's designed to empty right into a dumpster. So it's a multipurpose vehicle that I think is going to offer a lot of benefits for us all together.
That's very good.
John, I have a question. So is this the least expensive one out there?
They all seem to be right hovering between two eighty-five and four hundred thousand. I did a lot of research on them, and this one, for what it's multipurpose, they can do, is the best-priced unit. Plus, I look at the items that we have to maintain on it and what those renewal fees are for your brushes, your filters. This is a vac model, so it has a filter system and it does, it picks up the fine, fine grains. Mark Ragdale, who was a former director here years ago, has the same system in Frazier. And I spoke to him, and he said this was probably the best unit that we could pick for this community.
Because I have emailed you one of the companies along with this picture that that we have been asking to have one, that our street sweeping is very important, required.
This is a nice moveable, too, and most all of our guys can drive it. You don't need special licenses for it, which is good.
What, does that have a warranty?
Yes, there's a two-year warranty on it.
Parts, everything?
Yeah, I think it's bumper to bumper on.
This is three hundred and thirty thousand dollar truck we're purchasing.
Yeah.
Break down, and it's going to cost us hundred and twenty thousand to repair it. We're just going to keep spending money. We want to make sure that it has sort of a warranty on the parts and levers, so.
Yeah.
But the brand new is supposed to be warranty.
That's what I'm trying to understand, what's the?
I'm sure there's options to extend the warranty. I don't want to know what those prices are on that, but as long.
Manufacturer warranty should be included.
Yeah, we have, there's a one-year on it, and then there's an extended one on certain applications on the unit.
All right, and where will this be parked?
Inside somewhere to cover it. So no, there is, they're going to make one for it in our home.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, and this will be going through the residential and commercial sweeping?
Yeah, we're going to have a hamtramck plastered all over the side of there because I want the residents to be able to see that we're actually making.
Making progress, yes. It's a long overdue. That's what I want to say to the folks, that we finally making progress and stepping into the right directions, and that's what we need to do for the city. Bring the city cleanup. It's studying from the administration first. When we start cleaning up, then the residents and the commercial and non-residents will take care of it, you know?
And then everybody across.
I appreciate John doing, and the city manager putting this time in and getting it together, and everyone else. Thank you.
I think we, I just want to say that we are very fortunate to have this in such a short time because these units are not available, and when you order them, you know, waiting period is long cut. So we were very lucky to get this in. So it's almost like a one-off thing that you, either you take it or somebody else is going to buy it.
Oh, wow.
So, you know, we are lucky that we were able to move fast on this.
So my email worked? Thank you. Is there a question or say something?
So we had it previously. First emergency manager came, screwed us, sold everything.
Sold everything?
Yeah, what we have, because you, most of them don't know about it, sold everything, showed the revenue, balanced the budget, and he should do, balance the budget the other way, some of the contract, he did not do that one, and that is the reason, situation, we lost it, we have to buy it. So as the residents, we are, we have to do something our own permanent, so it is faster step. Second, is the part of the John job, he worked in his job and management also. So some of the thing, we cannot look all of the things. That's why you guys appointed and he doing the full-time job. So this is part of the job that we doing, and really, we really appreciate for doing the job, that's all. And just for the last, my colleagues and residents, we had it, they sold it, everything. So that's all the balance of the budget and all.
Took us twenty-three years, probably.
So just for the last, thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
This truck running, I've been doing it or on the, on the, on the, what about you kind of thought?
He's asking how often? He asked, are we doing it five days a week?
Oh, well, we're going to have this, well, it's going to be baby steps in the beginning, so we're going to have to get the residents used to it because obviously cars are going to have to move from one side of the street when we do it.
We're going to hear about the parking from.
It's going to be a learning curve, I'm sure, but what the goal is, is to get it on a regular basis, so they start to realize this, oh, it's Friday between twelve and three, they're going to come here, so.
It may start in the street in different days, you have to schedule.
The idea is we're going to have to put a map together, a schedule, it's going to be.
It's quite a work, yeah, I see.
We need to make an increased ticket for parking. Increase ticket, if they have a ticket fifty bucks, make it a hundred. That's what we want. We want to increase the ticket.
We're going to probably put a mascot in the front picking up the big item so they don't go in the machine, and we're going to have a truck that follows that removes the signs as they're cleaning that side, they'll place the signs on the other side of the street, then two days later, they'll do the other side of the street, so we're not sending people out twice to do the same job. So once I get down the system, we do have a system that Rodney, the former director, had set up already, so it just basically got to be modified.
Yeah, but you have to have a ticket, make a ticket like almost a hundred dollars.
So the scout car will be behind that truck?
So open the recourseman officer on the bumper, and he can flip your tickets.
All right. But we're not telling, it's actually going to be a police officer driving the truck?
He's right. Some people don't care.
Yeah.
Previous year, once the.
They say, oh, that's only twenty fifty bucks.
How many times do you go?
They sweep like that one. They need a lot of space and a lot of time.
All right, they will figure out how to do it, I mean, but while you are on there, what's the plan for the pot holes? Because I keep getting.
Yes, we've been, believe it or not, we've been hitting a lot of them, but they seem to blow up right away, so we will be out of again Thursday, we'll be doing some more.
I don't buy the street today, some of them right now.
It's, it's needed to get some more attention.
So it's nice about getting a little more.
Took us off topic.
No, I keep getting mentioned on Facebook like crazy about the potholes, and I, I don't know what to say. I keep telling them it's coming, you want to start, so.
We're trying to systematically do it, but we find ourselves jumping from here because everyone keeps calling, so we try to get them as they come, but I mean, we're doing them, I mean, it's happening.
So it is a priority at this time.
Well, we're getting, we have more guys that have started, so things will be picking up a little faster pace now.
All right, thank you so much. I think we're ready to.
Vote? Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri?
Ah, yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Chowdhury?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution 2353 approved.
Thank you. The last one is resolution 2023-54, approving second addendum to parking service agreement.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Discussion?
I actually have a question. Does it start next year, January first?
It's starting this, provided council approves, it'll be starting here real soon.
From this year, from this year, fourteen.
Okay, so.
Up to the year next.
If council approves it right now, it'll start.
Because I didn't want us to take, not have December and not.
They start from today?
As soon as we have.
Fourteenth. Fourteenth, in two days.
In two days.
Uh, in reality, they have to approve the minutes before resolution approved, also it's really in two weeks that it's approved.
It'll be retroactive, but it's okay.
All right, just making sure.
Then we're starting immediately.
So is everything, you need, do you guys?
It's good.
Oh, yeah, we do. We just.
Do you need to discuss it?
We do. We just wanted to.
We didn't need to cut, Mayor, we didn't need to cut like five days to move for the.
There's five days, a lot, half, ten days now.
Okay, that's what.
Yeah, I wrote it, I wrote the addendum. It's exactly what you guys wanted, I promise.
Sure.
Yeah, good job.
Yeah, that's good.
That's why I asked if you guys discussed, because I don't think it's exactly how you guys want it.
So we heard, we heard Mayor and Council what you guys wanted, we reached out, oh, they wrote it, and with your approval, we'll sign it. Actually, they, parking, the parking company already signed it, so literally this can be signed.
Yeah, that's it. This is good. So starting the fourteenth of this month, the, with the last ten days of the Ramadan, including Eid, Eid, we will have a free parking on those area that has leaders.
And parking lots.
And parking lots. So folks, that's great news, and thank you so much, city administration and colleagues and mayor putting it together, and, you know, we deserve to have a free parking during the holidays, and the vast majority Muslim in this community, they go to shopping, they go to parking lot, you know, so why not give them some linear, some space, some peace of mind to park and shop all day and all night if they're open? So we, we did the best we can, and then I want to thank the DDA also, that they worked on that too.
Yeah, I have to mention that the idea started in the DDA, we discussed it.
Oh, it's his idea, he's the field designing star.
So it's, yeah, if they were spying the holiday season, you know, it was mentioned in the DDA, and then I brought it to Max's attention and everyone else, and I want to thank.
I was hoping, I wrote a letter to, I emailed.
I think everybody was reaching out to me asking for it.
Yeah, I was, I was asking for a whole month, and I had, I started collecting signatures for that whole month of free parking for Ramadan, you know, but then it was going to, it's going to cost us a lot because of the contract we have in place, but we came up with the better.
Yeah, so that idea has to take two weeks from December to here, that was.
It's a fair compromise.
Yeah. So far, so far, we don't know, we might have a better idea next.
Well, yeah, thank you so much.
Only one sentence, I'm sorry, Mahmoud is getting, you understand, it is the diversity, what we did, we did the fair practice, that's all we did, and it fits for everybody. Thank you.
And at the end, it's, it's the shopping season, so this is what we need, people to come and park and use a campo and shop before the Eid holiday, for any Christmas, New Year, all these shopping seasons. So thank you so much, we can go on.
We discussed also before, so it is very fair, so we'll spread the political emphasis.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Chowdhury?
Approved.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri?
Ah, yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Resolution 2354 approved.
Thank you, and we move to the reports. We have Plant Moran financial forecast presentation.
Mr. Mayor, I understand it's a little bit out of our, our normal range here for our agenda, but we were trying to accommodate Plant Moran because they were having some scheduling problems, and we wanted to get them in as quick as we can, so we did move them to the end on this one occasion.
Thank you very much. Is the poll.
Yep.
Yep.
No, just tell me next. I'll, I'll try to follow along. Typically, I'm not too bad at that.
Good evening. My name is Brian Camiller, I'm a partner with Plant Moran, and off and on for the past nine years as projects have come up, my team and I have been serving the city of Hamtramck. This is the third year of this financial forecast project. We were hired back in February-ish of two thousand and one, so it was mid-pandemic, there was a lot of uncertainty about several of your significant revenue sources. I mean, everywhere we had questions about property taxes and income taxes as people were working from home, but you had, you have a couple additional revenue sources that at the time were very much in question and very doubtful, and so we were hired to take a five-year look, if we're on, if we continue on the path that we're on, where is the city of Hamtramck going to be in five years? Came back last year and updated it. Coming out of the pandemic, the city was rebounding well, and now a year later, you're in even better shape than we anticipated a year ago. Now, please, better is not great, better is better. You were in a very rough position two years ago, good things had happened, but you still have a ways to go, so I just want to temper the enthusiasm as I go through some of these. Next, please. So this is your general fund, the blue bar is revenue, the orange bar is expense, the gray bar is the remaining fund balance. Fund balance is your, your savings, as it were. So back in, and this is on the fiscal year, so when we were hired in February of two thousand and one, we were looking at three straight years of expenses exceeding revenue, so that means three straight years of our savings going down, and you had things like the jail closing, and GM wasn't running, and several other things. So at that point in time, it was a little bit scary as to what direction you were going. However, if you look at two thousand and twenty-two, and twenty-three is not yet complete, that's a bit of a forecast, all of a sudden, your revenues have, many of them have rebounded, and you actually had a surplus in two thousand and twenty-two, and we would anticipate that you'll have another one for fiscal year twenty-three. So that is a far cry from where you were just twenty-four months ago. Next. So we looked at all of the significant revenue sources and graded them either presumed stable or questionable. There is only one questionable revenue source now. Two years ago, the majority were. So let's go through some of the ones that are stable, I'll tell you how they rebounded. So mid-pandemic, we didn't really know what was going to happen with property taxes, turns out that they've been fine. They continue, the market value continues to go up, your taxable value continues to go up. So this came off of the questionable list last year and went to stable. Next. When we were hired, General Motors plant was closed, it was questionable if and when it was going to reopen, if and when what the capacity would be at the plant, and it is, it has reopened, it is a capacity, they're, they're adding shifts, and so we believe that this is also rebounded from questionable to stable, which is fantastic, that's a very large dollar amount that you rely on General Motors for. Next. State shared revenue, so this is sales tax collected across the state, all of us pay when we buy things, it fuddles through Lansing and comes back down through a formula that is primarily calculated based on population. So back in early two thousand and twenty-one, we had already gotten past the part of the pandemic where we realized, oh, everybody's home, they're buying a ton of stuff online, it is actually okay, sales tax is fine. You see that big jump in two thousand and twenty-two, what we had not anticipated at the time, was it took the state about a year and a half to go through the results of the two thousand and twenty census, and because the city of Hamtramck had population growth, last year you received not only an ongoing increase, but you also got retro pay for that eighteen months that they were still calculating your share based on your old census data. So that's why there's such a stark increase there in the twenty-two, and why twenty-three and on is fairly higher than it was in twenty and twenty-one. So again, we consider this to be quite stable and should continue to grow as sales tax grows across the state. District court, so at the time we were first hired, the court was, I don't know if it reopened at that point, but it was very limited activity, and as a result, the process cases and tickets and fines and everything else that runs through the court was down quite a bit. Two thousand and twenty was hit a low, twenty-one started to rebound, twenty-two rebounded quite a bit, and after some investigation, it appears that that was a case of catching up from the prior two years, that there was a backlog, which is why twenty-three has come back down, but still ahead of where it had been prior to two thousand and twenty-two. We have no reason to think that the activity at the court should slow down or decline. In fact, we would guess it would increase slightly over the coming years, and so this too is now considered stable. This is the really exciting one, income taxes. So I'm not entirely sure everything that the city's been doing on the administrative side, but keep it up. The collection of, of income tax has been outstanding over the last two years. So not to throw stalls at anyone, but prior administrations, we're probably leaving some money on the table, but current administration is out there collecting, and, I mean, that's an over a million-dollar jump. So no worry, as long as people continue to work and people continue to live here, there's no reason why that income tax number should go down. So again, stable.
Sorry.
Oh, no, it's okay. The one question we'll want is related to the jail. Next one, please. So this is actually better than we anticipated before because we didn't, we didn't know at the time that the, the way county jail would be used as a juvenile detention center, that decision hadn't been made at that point in time, so the city has received revenue The one questionable one is related to the jail. Next slide, please. So this is actually better than we anticipated before because we didn't, we didn't know at the time that the, the Wayne County Jail would be used as a juvenile detention center. That decision hadn't been made at that point in time. So the city has received revenue for that, but it is anticipated that it will close for good and that revenue will go away permanently. But given all of the other increases that you have, that does appear to be a manageable loss. So where are we at going forward? Revenue has stabilized. Twenty-four months ago, that was not the case. It was very much in doubt. And as you can see here, it has not only rebounded, but it has continued to increase. And we expect it will continue into the, the future over the next several years because all of those significant revenue sources that we talked about, barring a catastrophe that we're not anticipating, there's no reason why they, they should do anything but continue to grow. Next slide, please. So this is a summary of some of what I've said already. The income taxes are going to, should keep going up. The district court should continue to do well. Next slide. Something that we haven't mentioned yet, the ARPA money. So you have received $2.26 million through the state of Michigan. It originated at the federal government. And for the purposes of our forecast, we've recognized it in three equal parts over the next three years. So it will need to be spent, it needs to be committed by the end of 2024, it needs to be spent by the end of 2026. The census adjustment I mentioned was $860,000 of back pay, basically. But going forward, you're going to get monthly, or actually bi-monthly revenue from the state based on your higher population now. Next, please. So on the expenditure side, so let me, let me preface this. The conclusion that we came to two years ago, this conclusion still holds true. The city of Hamtramck does not really have an expenditure problem. You've had a revenue problem, much like many other cities across the state, especially in urban areas. Because the decline in property tax revenue from the Great Recession, 2008 to 2011, it was crippling to any mature community. If you still had room to grow and people were putting up neighborhoods, you wouldn't have been as impacted. But because you were a mature city, fully built out, you were hurt pretty badly. Your expenditures are under control. Next slide, please. So this delineates between personnel expenses and other. You can see the vast majority of your expenses are related to your people. Your headcount here in the city is, is far less than it was a decade ago. In my opinion personally, I don't think that you have any extra employees. If anything, it would be wonderful if you could hire more. Revenue doesn't necessarily support that, but if there's talk of what can we do about expenses, it's really only people that could be affected. The, the other operating expenses are, are quite lean. Next. Of your personnel expenses, now we split personnel into three categories. The blue is wages and fringes. The gray is your pension contributions. And orange is the healthcare. So you've actually done a very good job over the last several years of changing healthcare plans in order to save money. So looking at this graph, you can see there, there's really not anything there left to cut if we're still going to be offering that benefit. The gray portion, your first contribution, you have to make this. There is, is no way that you're allowed, under the state constitution, to not make your required contribution. And so that is absolutely fixed. If you wanted to do something on the expenditure side, it would end up falling into wages. But again, I don't think you need to do that. Next slide, please. Your first contribution, thankfully, over the last couple of years, has started to come down as an overall percentage of your total expenses. If you looked at this slide from a couple of years ago, we were concerned that it was going to continue to grow. In fact, we thought at some point it would be well in excess of a third of your general fund budget, would just go to paying pensions for people that had already retired. Next slide. So the reality is, it's not an expenditure problem here, has not been. It's been on the revenue side, which is why I was so excited to see all of those various revenue sources rebounding. There's just, there isn't any fat on the bone here. I'm very excited to hear about the grants and being able to get some equipment, things that you sorely needed. That's wonderful. Continue to look for those opportunities to let someone else buy you things. That is always wonderful. Next slide, please. So here's our forecast now with all of this new data that we have. General fund fund balance should continue to increase over the end of this current fiscal year 2023. We expect the next two years, '24 and '25, to continue to increase. Then there's a bit of a, of a turn. You see this red arrow that we put in? Now, this is a forecast. So what happens when you do a forecast? Usually, you're conservative, right? We don't want to overestimate our revenue and then get caught shorthanded. But then we also tend to be very conservative with our expenses, guessing that we're going to spend more than we actually will. So while the forecast itself does turn, as you continue to make good decisions, as your revenue sources continue to be stable and will probably be better than what is forecasted, I would not expect that those last three years of the forecast would come true. But this should serve as a reminder to you that the decisions that you make do matter and the decisions that you make on spending today, they, if it's a recurring expense, it compounds over time. So anything that you add to the budget now, unless it's a one-time purchase, it's there in the second year, in the third year, in the fourth year. And so I would recommend continuing to look ahead and, as you're making decisions, factor in what the tail of that decision is. How long is this going to affect us? And if, if it is a long-term decision, are we able to afford it? But look at the revenues as well. If they continue to exceed expectation, you'll be able to afford additional things. It really is a game of inches here in Hamtramck. Next slide, please. So the forecast is operational. There are some very significant unfunded needs of the city. Gentlemen talked about puddles. The roads need work. Your unfunded pension is still very significant. To the extent that you can replace people that have left or find people, it may cost more money because it is a seller's market for talent right now. We're seeing wages in key positions going up 10%, 20%, 30% just to get a qualified candidate in the door. Vehicles, equipment, not just public safety, but all DPW, everything, everything's expensive. You can't buy a fire truck for 50 grand. They're, you know, six or 700,000. Police cars fully outfitted, max are like 65 grand at this point.
A lot.
Yeah, they're not inexpensive. And so we don't have these big-ticket items built into the forecast. You haven't been spending money on it, which is why it's not in there now. But these are things that you will have to take care of and replace over the next X number of years. Next slide, please. So again, I, I'm cautiously optimistic, even though this forecast does turn in 2027, it's, it's very little. It's not a big drop. And I'm very confident that you can manage that now through then and beyond. You're not locked into anything today for what's going to happen in 2027 or 2028. Next slide, please. So I'm very happy to tell you that things are much better than they were. You're in a stable-ish position now. You're not affluent, you're not rolling in money, but at the same time, you're not going broke like you were two years ago. It's a good place to be. There are a lot of communities that are not in that shape. There are a lot of communities that are going broke. But you are in charge of your own destiny at this point. Thanks to the improvements in the economy locally and nationally, you're sitting in a good spot where you can make positive progress going forward. So while the outlook is improved, please don't think that everything is fixed. It's not fixed. It's going to be an ongoing problem and an ongoing solution that you'll be making in every council meeting with every decision that you make. So I said that you had a revenue problem. You still have a revenue problem. And I say that because you don't have control over most of your revenues. Property taxes, you're already capped out. So you can't decide to raise taxes. Unless the taxpayers were willing to pass a Public Act 345 millage, that has failed here a couple of times already. No surprise, it fails almost everywhere that goes for it because it's just not an appealing millage to the taxpayer. Your income taxes, that, that's where you can, you can't raise the percentage, but you can do, as you have been, better and better at collecting. So that is an opportunity where hard work and sweat will generate more money. But there's nothing you can do, you're not going to get more ARPA, there's nothing you can do to improve state shared revenue. Maybe something can be done with the jail, I don't know, but you can't necessarily tell Wayne County what to do. So those big-ticket revenues, most of them are out of your control. You're at the mercy of the world. Can economic development drive income and property taxes? Yes, absolutely it can. So that should be a priority as well. Bring more businesses in. If people are making improvements to their homes or their businesses, those should be captured in their taxable value and in their assessments. That is a way that hard work and sweat here in the city can generate additional revenues. Actually, I think we could skip over 345. To my knowledge, you're not going for that again. I don't blame you. It is a very, very tough sell. You will need to continue to work with collection and enforcement of your ordinances and taxes and anything that, that you can influence. I would strongly encourage the creation of a very comprehensive capital improvement plan that looks at all of your infrastructure, roads, water, sewer, all of the equipment, the computers in City Hall, the roof, anything that might end up costing a significant amount of money. Get it all in one place and so you can begin to plan on how you're going to improve or replace those assets. To the extent possible, look into additional revenue, revenue opportunities, be they grants, be they any other programs that you may be able to tap into. Next. So in summary, you're in a much better spot than you were two years ago. Continued improvement certainly possible. You're on the right path. But you can't get complacent because things aren't fixed. You still have a ways to go in order to restore the city's fiscal condition to what I think you, you desire it to be. So this is definitely a marathon. It's not a sprint. You're probably only in mile one or two, and it's a 26-mile race. So please be patient and please keep your eye on the ball. Any questions from council?
So Plant Moran Finance, we, we did, City hired or Michigan State mandate us to do the third-party finance report?
I'm, I'm sorry, I was.
I think that Kathy had hired them, Plant Moran.
Uh, yes, I'm sorry, I was completely tuned out. I was answering something. The state of Michigan Treasury is financing this report.
This year there?
Yeah.
Great. They did it.
She got first, she got a state.
Treasury.
Okay.
Yeah, I requested them to finance it again. They agreed.
Same thing we did before. My colleagues, they don't know why he's coming for report today. Second thing is part of the finance, CFO job, what Plant Moran doing today? CFO has to do this report also. Of course, we need a third party to do it.
The beauty with Plant Moran.
I, I know, I know. Just want to go back to that. Can you go there, please? Slide number 21. So slide number 21, you see the 2027 and 28 guys.
Yep.
This situation happened 2007, 2009. We, and after that crash, we have the surplus and crash coming like that, exactly coming right there. So we give the two times. Me and Mr. Johnak request the Michigan State to come look at our, our, we don't, you know. Second time, we brought it. So our expectation was there. Again and again, some of the contract, we cannot touch with our emergency finance management. That's why we brought it and most of the time they screw us. And no matter what, today, we are healthy, there's the one is coming. There's no question about it because I've been experienced 16 years with this. So it's coming. Same thing, 2009, my first council meeting, I told them after, what is this?
American Excel.
American Excel. Really, they found, they was not kidding. Expanding, expanding that time is the, it was almost hitting the police department. Overtime money was like a crazy. We did little control it. So if there is a revenue section, Plant Moran said, revenue cannot be miracle things this city, no question about it. There is not American Excel, another one is coming, not ZM, another one coming. So your revenue not going to bump up. It's going to be like that. So 1% revenue, personal income tax is the average this city. And you're not going to see like a lot of personal income taxes coming. So revenue, don't expect, it's going to come like a miracle or something. But the other hand, 2047, like we are planning to long-term relationship, long-term in this city, stable, that is the thing we have to look for. If the jail go, what, 1.5 or 1.7?
3.
Okay, 1.3 will be right there and that, that your yellow line will be up to look. So all those things, slowly, slowly, we have to keep it from now. That is my idea to let you guys know Plant Moran, they doing the good thing, he telling you, it's up to you how we going to maintain. He, he tell you the great things, he tell you the, the, that you can hire. Guys, more you hire, more your pension going up. And he also warned you, your pension, you're not making enough. So both thing, we have to decide how we can do it. Today news, I don't know if you guys heard the news about the high impact. Okay, so, well, so it's coming. So we don't want a Hamtramck city, somehow our mistake goes to some other receivership. So that's all my request and thank you. Your opinion, now up to us, how we gonna maintain and how we gonna control our cost and revenue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for that. So I just want to mention that I remember very well the report of last year. It was totally the opposite of this. And you mentioned at the beginning that you weren't sure after the pandemic and stuff because it kept mentioning that we're going down and by 2025, the city will go into bankruptcy. So sometimes unexpected changes happen. Like this year, the income tax, nobody expected that it would go that high. And.
It's not an accident. It was, it was hard work on the city's part.
I know. I mean, there's a lot of good work being done, more efficient work and, but again, last, in this presentation last year, you compared 2003 and 2020, and the income tax revenue was almost the same, 2.6, 2.7. So, I mean. So I mean, this is very optimistic forecast. I'm not going to worry about 2028 now, as long as we are going well for the next several years. Hopefully, some positive changes will happen. But one thing that wasn't mentioned is the state contribution to the MERS. Last year, they passed the bill that they will increase their contribution from 42% to 60%. And I know it's not guaranteed now, but it's not mentioned anywhere in this stuff.
Correct. They actually very stupid. So we did not include that because it has not been awarded yet. There's also, before you accept it, make sure that you have gone through the act. Having the actuary calculate what your new contributions are. Because there are some strings attached to that money. So the calculation of your payment is going to change. I absolutely get the money. That's the right thing, take it from the state. But it is going to have an effect on your expenses as well. It's not just free money.
What do you think, Max?
We're getting ready to apply for it now. We just sat in webinar last week.
I think just to update council on this particular topic. From 17, the application will start to apply for this particular aid. And by September, they will close that whole process. So by September, they would have decided on each and every application, the amount of contribution that needs to be made. And they would have awarded these contributions. So in the next, you know, four or five months, we'll have that contribution from the state.
So is there an estimate about how much we're getting a year?
No. It's not a... No, 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 no. It's not a yearly contribution. It's a one-time contribution fixed up to that level. That's what I understood from that webinar.
I think when the mayor was asking of how much we'll save a year.
That I don't know again because that will end up being dependent on how the MERS does their calculation and how it will affect. Because it will be, 60% is not 100%, okay? So MERS and the state could decide, okay, fine, we've taken you up to 60%. Now you guys need to keep going up to 70% or 80%, you know, things like that. So what I'm saying is, that thing is not clear at the moment. It will get clear probably sometime next year, but not this year. So in my budget, you know, for the next year, I have kept us at the same rate of MERS payments as was in the past, about a 6% increase from last year. You know, so that is as conservative an estimate as you can get. Because 6% is what is their requirement to keep you going forward. So the way I see it is that I need to be conservative in my estimates in terms of my expenditures and also in terms of revenue. So I'm not going to count on any money coming in unless it does come in.
So if we can continue to run lean to some degree as well and keep the payment high, hopefully, we can get those numbers even higher so that we don't have this problem again. We don't want to get made up to 60% and then all of a sudden, we start dropping again. We want it to continue to go up, so.
Yeah, so again, we will, in the next five months, we'll have a very clear idea as to how much is the state going to contribute to the city. Because they'll do, you know, a calculation for each and every city and community. And then we will, and the check that will either go directly to... Probably, it'll go directly to MERS. It probably won't even come through the city. It'll just... That's what I'm anticipating. I don't think they would want to route it through the cities. The cities are being used to go through and complete the process and the procedure. Thank you.
Pretty excited though.
Well, I'm very optimistic about that one.
Any more questions?
So one more, sir. It was happened previously. We hold up the MERS payment, made the deposit, brought it here to the council. We approve it and next session, and we have to pay all the money back and we don't have nothing. So that's why I said, be realistic, be truth, and that's why we see how far we can go.
That's why you have experience CFO and CEO, they'll do a good job, keep it controlled.
It's team effort.
Team effort, yeah. Okay, I think I don't have anything.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, now the... Well, to the mayor report, I'll make it short so we can finish before the Iftar time.
We have a close session, so you guys...
Well, I don't have anything to say. The activities that happened over the past week or two weren't much. We were invited to St. Charbi's event, SSDAM, maybe for that nice Iftar. And I was invited to another Bengali event in Betu Mukarram. It was fun to meet the, you know, the whole community in one place. And I was invited also to be the keynote speaker for a fundraising dinner or Iftar in Tennessee for Yemen. I went there for two days.
Memphis?
Memphis, yes.
Wow, I used to go there.
Yeah, it's a nice place. That's where I studied for my first board exam in medical school. I escaped from Hamtramck, secret visit there, stayed for three months, took my board exam, passed, then came back. So I have good memories of there. We raised over 200,000 for orphans in Yemen. It was a good event. That said, this is the last 10 days of Ramadan. So we are not meeting before the Eid. So I want to say happy Eid to everyone in advance. And that's all for me today. Mr. Mayor Portman, if you have anything to say?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I have to say this one. I need a city manager and also attorney, attention, city clerk. So there is the misunderstanding to the public right now. I think few, last year or few years ago, we had a change amendment to the charter. It was the no elected official can run more than three times same position. So I am talking to the general, everybody. So it is after board, after we pass, it is effect from next year, January. So from that year, January, to start counting the all those three years. Some of the people has the misunderstanding.
I became a freshman, they get two more.
Yes, still I have more chance than you because you lost two years. If I get late, I still have a chance.
That's my...
Yeah, I just want to... Mr. Muwidd Ma'mut, I just want to clarify that one because people misunderstood that one. And also, again, we don't want to leave the Hamtramck city. There is the, this year elections, some new council members might coming. We don't want to leave the city for them like a bad situation. So that is my intention. Basically is that, I want to clear that amendment. Thank you, everybody. Any question again? You guys can come talk to the clerk, attorney, and city manager. They will explain you more better than us because some question came to the community. Thank you.
Thank you. City council members, anyone wants to say something?
Yeah, thank you, DDA, Mayor and City Council to bring this parking issue. I tell the residents, come to the Joseph Go Po and shop now. You don't get the ticket until next ending. Thank you. And I thought, Councilman Hassan, I thought it the past should close. So three times maybe from the past to now, but you're in clarification, they will see.
Anyone else?
Yeah, go ahead.
Go ahead. Councilman... All right. Okay, so good evening to you all again. Thank you for being here. I just wanted to thank you for attending the Iftar that occurred on last Sunday from SSDA, Celestia of the Queen Shurma. Over 300 folks showed up, including elected officials, US Senator, Congressman, our very own City of Hamtramck Chief Police Officer, Enemoy San, Chief Fire Chief Matthew, along with our mayor and council members, as well as our city manager was there. Thank you so much for joining us, that wonderful event. And without you, it wouldn't be a successful and wonderful. We appreciate, we enjoy your company. I just wanted to talk about the street sweeping. It's again, we are need of street sweeping. City of Hamtramck, streets and roads. We get a lot of complaints from the communities that we're not fixing, we're not sweeping, we're not doing anything. Now, we're working on it, so hopefully, everybody's affordable, take care of the city. We always talk about that we want to beautify, we want to make it beautiful city. But if we don't initiate it, if we don't start buying things, we start working on our own first, how can we just ask residents and others to take care of it? So that's a good start. And this is our last 10 days of Ramadan. And it's going fast, tell you. It's really already gone, 20 days. And in advance, I'd like to say Eid Mubarak. And you're welcome to my house on Eid Day or after Eid Day to join the celebration of Eid Fethir. And then second, third thing, that the free parking, it's going to start this 14th of April. You know, and now you can go to shop, tell your friends, family, and constituents that the free parking is now until after the Eid, right? One day after Eid is...
One day after the calendar, as the calendar... One day after, as what the calendar recognizes it.
Okay, one day after the calendar recognizes. So there you go. Thank you. Have a good night.
Mr. Mayor, thank you, everyone who were joined today. Congratulations to all new members that are joining with us for different commissions. My perspective, my standpoint, I'm going to talk about something in international politics that I'm going to condemn whatever happened in Alaska, Moshi. The way people getting killed and getting beaten up by holidays. And now I'm going to request USA and UNF to take the proper steps to save those innocent lives and, you know, help people to this most freedom country. And if you don't react properly, that's making us a bias. So we don't want to be in that position. That America, you know, should stand for what we believe and what we do and talked about. And free parking, of course, is going to be an announcement on website. So our community will hear from the Thai, what is, when it's starting and when. This is when it's going to be ending. And thank you, everyone, for all this Iftar party that everyone joining. I have small recommendations on the future. When we, our city going to any Iftar party, I would say that our city manager should represent a group of people. And this is the, you should lead those groups. And this is the representation of the city of Hamtramck. That will be look nicer and, you know. That's my recommendation. And everything else, great, thank you so much. And happy Eid to all of you and all Siafrid. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I forgot one more thing.
I'll get back to you. Thank you, Councilman Wahid Mahmud, for mentioning what's happening in Arkansas. And that just confirmed the controversial proclamation that we had a month ago, that we are with liberty and freedom of all nations and against suppression of all suppressing governments. Thank you so much. Yes?
Yes, sir. I have lots of residents complaining and requesting to City Hall as to go back to the five-day operation. So the residents who was requesting, and I just want to let you guys know, we are talking to our team and talk to the managers. And we'll go back to the normal operation hopefully soon. Because the example has all the cities, everybody five-day operation. And also specifically, especially after Friday, people coming, our people, and see the city is closed, they're going back. So that is the problem coming from the residents, request coming from the residents. So we just want to let you guys know, we are thinking about it and we are talking. So you're going to get answer soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, so do we have any report for the controller?
He already...
Okay. Anything?
We can skip him, we got him.
Yeah, he's good on there.
Not because the report was the same one as Plam Moran's.
He's accepting Plam Moran's.
We know you're fasting. I didn't talk... You answered a lot of questions. Yes. Now we move to the city manager report.
Just a few things, try to keep it short. Are happy to report that our code enforcement is at full staffing. So getting into spring here, I want to remind everyone to keep the grass cut, get the yards clean, keep the alleys empty of the garbage can unless it's actually garbage day and keep the garbage in the garbage can with the garbage can closed. Code enforcement is hammering hard. We are trying very hard to keep the city clean. We want it beautiful for its residents. Happy to also report that DPS is just about full staff now. We've hired a bunch of people on. So some of the little tasks that we were missing before, hopefully, we'll be able to get that taken care of. And we will continue to do the pothole patching as we go. The only thing that we are really hurting on is not enough police officers still. So still really trying to recruit that hard. If you know anyone, send them our way. We can potentially hire people that want to be police officers in other positions and then, you know, eventually groom them into those spots if all goes well. That includes reserve officers as well. Please continue to spread the word. That's all I have for tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right, we move back to the public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Lynn Blazey?
Hello again, Mayor and Council. Just a couple of quick things. I would like to congratulate Adam Wodell and Slim again on your appointments to serve the public. And I really appreciate your willingness to step up and serve the community in a meaningful way. I'm still curious about the timeline for the Hazard Mitigation Research Grant. I don't think that was addressed in the discussion. And then I would like to thank council and the mayor and the city again for moving so quickly on the free parking and a structure that better represents the diverse holiday shopping needs of our community. I think that's really important in such a diverse community that everybody's shopping needs are represented and accommodated for with free parking. I'd also like to thank Plam Moran. That presentation is one that I look forward to every year because I'm a nerd. And then related to the parking, I hope everybody notices and enjoys the Ramadan banners and lights arranged by API vote on Camp Blom Kniff with the support of the mayor and council. And thank you for working with us to make that happen. Eid Mubarak and Ramadan Kareem.
Thank you, Lynn. Mr. Bill Meyer? Two-minute agenda items, sir.
First of all, congratulations on the finest financial report I've ever heard in the 22 years I've looked here. And I just have to think back at some of the people in the previous administration, some of the xenophobic people who said, there's no way you guys can be able to run this city. I think it's not only because of that, but I think it's also because you have a team that's actually working together. We finally overcame our political dysfunctioning. And we have some great people running the city now. And we're working together, and that's the most important thing. That's why the report is better. That's one of the reasons. But I want to say that I don't think you answered the question about zoning on those buildings. Because the question was, why didn't they change it back when they started paying commercial? Why did they stay residential all those years and still pay commercial? Why didn't someone say, oh, you're a commercial building, you just got a commercial license, you're paying commercial taxes, change the zoning? Why didn't they do it then? Why did they wait till now? I don't know, there's some other factor going on here, which I don't want to research. Okay. I also want to mention that the congratulations to Adam, who became an advisor to the Human Relations Commission. I'm not quite clear because, you know, I was one of the... I was the chair of the founding committee that started this Human Relations Commission. I was the chair of commission for five years. And we created a thing called advisory groups within that commission. And the administration that we had to work with here was totally opposed to that and stopped that and didn't let us have advisory groups. So I don't know, is this, is he a full-fledged member of One Hamtramck or is he an advisor to the One Hamtramck? I'm sorry. I'm sorry to the, the Human Relations Commission, stop my time.
You got 30 seconds max to talk on his time.
Okay, I'll get it done. All right, so we actually have a full board at the moment, so we're allowed to appoint advisory, which is not, it's not a full member, but it's still an appointed position, not voting at this point, but in theory, if someone leaves, that person will slide right into the full membership.
Boy, if you guys knew the history of this whole thing and the hassle that we went through with this commission, we created advisor groups and that commission, the mayor, former mayor and several, resisted that and told us, we can't do that, we can't have our own advisory groups. And now all of a sudden, we got a totally different thing. That's fine, I'm glad it's working and I'm so glad I'll remark to you.
And the zoning too, we can't really answer why they did it, re-zoning years ago, somewhere along the way, the city got zoned and that stayed residential, there was commercial businesses there, just because a business...
And the thing is next, if you don't mind me interrupting, if a business has been there for 15 years, we don't know it's really zoned in correctly typically.
No one's paying attention to it.
Yeah, unless somebody else is applying for a business.
Unless a new business comes in and...
Every city, every city has zoning stuff like this, it's just a normal thing.
It came to light when, like you said, the marijuana one opened and we seen it was an issue, we recognized that that whole block was all residential, we scratched our head and wondered why ourselves took it upon ourselves to fix it.
Time's up. Go ahead, finish your stuff.
It's not a problem now anyway, I just was curious about the past, why it happened in the past, we're all cool now, sorry. I do want to warn you about the...
Your time really is up though.
No, it isn't.
How much do you have left?
I got a minute 49 seconds here.
Two minutes? Out of two minutes?
Yeah, I got 10 seconds. And I'm going to ask for another minute.
Mayor, can you have another minute? See if you can keep talking over him.
All right, thank you. No, this is the way it should be, we should be able to talk back and forth anyways and not a time limit, that's the way you should treat the public, everyone, not just me, I'm not trying to... So I want to just warn you about relying on grants, you know, just like we had a emergent financial manager who thought we could privatize everything and solve the problems, now we're discovering that's not the answer. Grants are not the answer either. If you can't come up with money to solve and spend that you need, you're taking a risk, it's a risk on grants. It's nice to get money, you're begging people for money and they're giving it to you, that's great. But that's not how you're supposed to get money originally, now everything's turning into grants, it's not our fault, I'm not saying, I think we're all in this position, every city, they're all starting to rely on grants. Is this the way to pay for things? No, it isn't. There's a lot of risk. You have to get people who know how to write grants, so you have to hire them, you got to find them, there's tons of paperwork involved, all this stuff is unnecessary if it was done the old way.
What does your clock say?
Oh, Christ.
Oh, no.
Was that a minute? Okay. Okay, well Hassan was right about privatizing, that's what happened back then, don't do it again, don't let it happen, that's what happened to parking meters, you privatized the parking meetings.
Thank you, sir.
We lost all that money.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Mayor, that's all for public comment.
All right, thank you. And I just want to mention that we, we discussed that zoning thing in the planning commission and one of the members brought that topic about presidential commercial of Kinneth. So I can't remember exactly what happened, but it was discussed a couple of months ago. I don't think he heard me talking. He's busy. All right, so I think we're done, we move to the...
There will not be voting after closed session, so we're just gonna, well, we're not going to, we're not going to come back live.
Okay.
So if we can motion to close session?
I'll motion to close the session.
Second.